Thank you for joining us this evening. Regular scheduled council meeting in the Park City City Council on August 25th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Marla, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Saucetta.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Chuck Beeter is going to lead in the invocation and Councilmember Brandy Bailey is going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Let's pray. Lord, we just thank you for this evening. We thank you for this time that we can come together, Father, to practice the principles set down for us by our fathers, by our forefathers. And Heavenly Father, we would just take this time to lift up our first responders to you. As well as the city council, Father, we pray for their protection. We pray, Father, for their wisdom to make the decisions they were going to make tonight. Heavenly Father, we also would just thank you for the opportunity that we have to come together to share our ideas and to pursue our happiness. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Ben?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Brandy? Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And that motion passes eight zero. We don't have anything this evening for awards or presentations.
Yes, sir.
Except we have our proclamation. Sorry. Dana?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This evening we have a proclamation in celebration, recognition, and honor of the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution. Whereas the women who fought for the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution on August 26th, 1920, deserve special celebration, especially on this 100th anniversary of its ratification in 2020. And whereas the right to vote is the cornerstone of our democracy and the fundamental right upon which all of our civil liberties rest. And whereas the 19th Amendment did not guarantee suffrage for all women, including Native Americans, who did not gain the right to vote until 1924. For Asian Pacific Islander Americans, it was 1952. African American and Latin Americans suffered voter suppression until passage of the Voting Rights Act of 1965 and 1975. And whereas the fact that today women are active in local, state, and national government and are running for office in unprecedented numbers reminds us that we all follow in the footsteps of these American suffragists. And whereas the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution has played an important role in advancing the right of all women, now therefore be it resolved that the residents and civic institutions celebrate the 100th anniversary of the passage and ratification of the 19th Amendment providing for women's suffrage to the Constitution of the United States. Park City urges all citizens to actively participate in the democratic process to inspire future generations and to be committed to a democracy where every citizen has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Do we need to make a motion to receive?
Yes, we do.
I would make a motion to receive and file this proclamation.
Ben?
I'll defer to Brandy on this.
Brandy?
I'd like to second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. Dana, I don't have my sign up sheet. Kyle, since I know you're here to speak up public forum, we'll go a little out of order. I'm not sure where you're at, but I'll start with you. If you want to go ahead and come on up.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Charlie Davidson, the president of the Saddle Brook Homeowners Association located on the northeast corner of 85th and Broadway. I first want to thank you for the public forum portion of your meetings, allowing the opportunity for community members to come and speak about ideas and opinions that they have. Tonight I come on behalf of the majority of the residents of Saddle Brook to voice opposition to the building of a truck stop on the northeast, excuse me, northwest corner of 85th and I-135, which would be built directly behind the Saddle Brook Homes. Last week, an article was published in the Wichita Eagle outlining a plan to build a truck stop at the location and possibly begin in construction on that truck stop within 60 days. As president, I began getting multiple messages by phone, text, and email from the residents of the homeowners association immediately voicing their opposition. And as I said earlier, the majority of the homeowners opposed the building of this truck stop in this location. Through the past week or so, I've also learned that the majority of Bear Hill residents also opposed the building of this truck stop in that location, which would be close to their housing addition as well. Please know, this is not in opposition to a truck stop being built. The homeowners support economic development and everyone understands the area around us will not continue forever to be farmland, but at some point would have some type of development. However, no one thought it would ever be an industrial site like a truck stop. Again, we are not in opposition to a truck stop, but we are in opposition to a truck stop being built at 85th and I-135, close to our housing addition, or a truck stop being built nearing any housing addition. And we believe a better location could be easily found to build such truck stop. Some of the reasons we adamantly oppose the building of this, which has, of a truck stop which has to be in a I-1 light industrial district zoning is listed in your actual zoning regulations itself, when it states it is a location that creates limited environmental problems in the way of sound, glare, dust, smoke, odor, and vibrations, and do not permit the intermixing of residential uses. The zoning code itself, in its general overview and the zoning regulations, explain in a nutshell why 85th and I-135 is not a location for a truck stop and why this location goes against your own zoning regulations. After the story was posted in the Wichita Eagle, a resident posted, "Stop the Truck Stop Petition" on change.org. Hundreds have signed this petition and hundreds have signed a written petition that went door to door in Saddle Brook and Bear Hill. And I have those, I'll leave those with you today, the petition as well. The Saddle Brook and Bear Hill Homeowners Association also incurred residents to come to this meeting tonight to oppose the building of the truck stop. You can see the amount of support with the residents here in the chambers. Also, if you go out into the lobby and they've extended the training room available for us as well, there's quite a few of us here tonight. I understand that nothing yet has been presented to the zoning and planning commission and as of yesterday afternoon, and that nothing is on the agenda tonight about the truck stop. However, the residents take pride in the neighborhood and are very concerned about a truck stop being built that will bring unwanted noise, again, odors, smoke, dust, human trafficking drastically bringing down the property values instantly and stop residential growth in our neighborhoods. Therefore, myself, a representative and a representative of Bear Hill and a few other residents want to speak on different aspects as to why the building of the truck stop cannot happen, and we're asking for your help as elected officials. From my understanding, in zoning cases, 17 criteria have to be met. I can easily show several of the criteria that does not meet the criteria of building at the proposed location at 85th and I-135. What are the, one of them, what are the existing uses, their character and condition on the subject property and surrounding neighborhood? It is not an industrial area. What are the current zoning of the subject property and that of the surrounding neighborhood in relationship to the requested change? Again, it's not industrial. Is the length of time the subject property has remained undeveloped or vacant as zoned a factor in the consideration? It's actually been zoned a C2 location since the mid 1990s, not an industrial location. Is it a suitable vacant land or building available or not available for development that currently has the same zoning as is requested? Yes, there is much more land available, possible locations for this truck stop. Is the subject property suitable for the current zoning to which it has been restricted? Yes, it is suitable, I think, for Z2 zoning, but not for industrial. To what extent will the removal of the restrictions, i.e. the approval of the zoning requests, detrimentally affect the property and the neighborhood? This is what you're going to hear about from experts tonight, and it would decrease our property values. What is support or opposition of the request? I think tonight you can see there's vast opposition. Is there any information or are there any recommendations on this request available from knowledge or persons or experts which would be helpful in its evaluation? Yes, and you're going to hear from a few of those this evening. By conspiracy, does the relative gain to the public health, safety, or general welfare outweigh the loss in property value or the hardship imposed upon the applicant by not approving the request? No, it does not. Again, I know there are not before you tonight or before the zoning commission any plans, but we want the mayor and the council to know, as residents of Saddle Brook and Bear Hill, we oppose the building of a truck stop at 85th and I-135. Again, we're asking for your help as elected officials, and we are ready to hire legal services if we need to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Kyle?
Is it five minutes? Mayor, is it five minutes? Five minutes?
Go ahead, Kyle.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Kyle Lang and I'm a resident of Bear Hill subdivision. I'd like to read from a prepared statement talking about process. Fight or Flight: It's the Natural Response to a Perceived Threat or Danger. Throughout human history, civilizations have been continually faced with threats to their communities and establishments. Some choose to run, others choose to fight. What you see here tonight when you look around this building are citizens representing two distinct neighborhoods that have made the decision to stand together and fight against the threat of a potential truck stop travel center that will not only threaten our current quality of life, but hinder the potential growth of our neighborhoods as we know them. What you will hear from our speakers are information and data for why we are choosing to fight this instead of fleeing the conflict and sitting on our hands and allowing the threat to overtake us. Now, as Charlie alluded to, I know you're thinking, "Why here and why now? There's nothing we can do about this. There's nothing presented to us." You're protesting something that hasn't even happened yet. Come back when there's something we can do about it. And you would be correct, except for the fact that the system is flawed. The deck is stacked against us, the process is rigged. In what kind of America and democracy does a group of unelected planning and zoning commissioners have more power to dictate what gets built in a community than the representatives duly and directly elected by the people? How can it be that our elected council members are unable to take a public position that represents the vast majority of their constituents because of fear of bias and legal ramifications? Why is it that surrounding neighborhoods that are affected by a potential development have to learn about it through the media in order to have a say in the process? To put it kindly, don't yank our chains, don't insult our intelligence, we know how these things work. The time to protest a city budget is not at the public hearing, that is, the last seal of approval. It is during the budget workshops that happen throughout the budget planning process. Similarly, large multinational corporations don't just show up in a municipality out of the blue. There are behind the scenes negotiations that occur long before the public has a chance for input. And to be honest, it's almost insulting to only give residents an opportunity to speak out against the products of these types of negotiations at the 11th hour, when all parties have already invested so much into an agreement that the thought of backing out and returning to square one is more arduous than just approving an agreement and moving on. Personally, it is out of fear that I am motivated to be here tonight. It is the fear that if I wait for my opportunity to speak at a planning and zoning commission meeting, that the engineering and planning costs incurred by the developer and the behind the scenes good buddy chit chat of, "How do I get this through zoning?", will have been so far down the river that giving our opposition a chance to fight will be a mere formality. It's the fear that well-financed developers already know how to get what they want through the system, and the little guy is left wondering, "How did this just happen?" Now let me be clear, all of us moving into these neighborhoods knew that the undeveloped land around us was not zoned for vacant. We accepted the risk of a structure that we did not agree with being erected on that land. But what we do not accept is the prospect that a developer can cross the correct Ts and dot the correct Is and get a zoning change pushed through the system so he can build something that was not part of the original planning intent of a piece of property in the first place. So what you see here tonight is a group of people who want to enter into the public record our side of the story. We want to send a clear message that we will not back down from the intent to develop a property that negatively affects us all for purposes not outlined in its current zoning designation. And the group you see behind me this evening will drag their neighbors, if necessary, to the planning and zoning commission meeting, should it arrive, and fight this threat headstrong and together. We do not stand against development, we stand against the types of development that require variances and zoning changes. We do not stand against truck stops, we stand against truck stops sandwiched between residential neighborhoods. Much like our neighborhood covenants factor in the effects of changes to our property on our neighbors, so too should an undeveloped property owner factor in the changes upon not only those in the immediate 200-foot vicinity, but all those affected by their changes. So what can you do? You can tell the developer or instruct those representing Park City to tell the developer, "Look, man, really? Are you really going through with this? Are you sure you can't find a less controversial location? You know this is going to make us all look bad in the end." So I ask you, elected representatives of the people, will you stand up and fight with us throughout this upcoming process, or will you cower in fear and flee under the cover of bureaucracy? We may be down in the count and have two strikes against us, but if we go down, we will go down swinging. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Kyle. So going forward, I know we have a lot of people here to speak on this, and I think we only have several people that are going to speak this evening that are signed up. So I'll continue to go down the list, but I just want to make sure we're going to limit it to three minutes and try not to repeat anything that we've already heard this evening. Gary?
Mayor, you want me, I have the people that are going to speak, you want me just to have a couple of minutes?
Would you bring the next one?
There's only three more, can we give them the five minutes? Is that okay?
That would be fine if you just have three more.
Okay. Is Matt Bevillin there? Is Matt here? Matt Bevillin?
No, Matt Bevillin is not here. I can see him.
We have three more.
I don't need five minutes.
We only have three more. If you can give them five minutes, that's all.
Could you get with Dana so you can get them lined up so we can bring them in right away?
Right here. Justin, there's a standing seat right there.
Good evening. My name is Tyra Miles, and I'm a community expert in victim services, and I've spent over 13 years providing victim services right here in Southwood County. I'm here to speak against the location of the new Park City truck stop, not only as a community expert, but as a concerned citizen and mother. I'm currently the coordinator of direct services at Wichita State University Center for Combating Human Trafficking. Let me start by saying that this is in no way against truckers and what they bring to our community. Especially during COVID-19, truckers have very much been the heroes. I want them to have a safe place to sleep and bathe while on the road, but I, like many others in this community, have to ask, is this the wisest location for our truck stop? In 2018, the Kansas Attorney General passed a law that all Kansas CDL license holders must complete a training on human trafficking. That was put together by the Midwest-founded nonprofit organization called Truckers Against Trafficking. If human trafficking did not occur at truck stops, there would be no need for this law, nor would there be a need for the Truckers Against Trafficking to exist. Even the countless trainings that I've listened on, truck stops are always identified as a place that human trafficking occurs. I recently, prior to COVID, of course, attended a trial with a survivor that had to get on a stand in front of a bunch of strangers and a man that exploited her. She was asked to recall every detail that she could remember about the events that took place in her human trafficking case. She was asked, sorry. Even today, I tear up as I think about the horrible things that she went through and the fear that she described. But the one thing that really stayed with me as she spoke about the Park City truck stop as being the location of the crime that had happened to her. Progress and growth at Park City is awesome. I want to see our community thrive, but what are we willing to trade for progress? The residents of Park City and Saddle Brook in particular moved to this community for certain protections. We ask that you assist in protecting us by finding a new location for the truck stop. One last point I would like to discuss. Does anyone know what the top vulnerability for human trafficking is? Anyone? It's age. If we look at the federal law on human trafficking, it states that force, fraud, and coercion must occur for a person to be charged with human trafficking. But in the case of a minor, none of these things have to be proven. Even the law recognizes age vulnerability. Saddle Brook has over 200 youth that reside in this small neighborhood. Imagine if that child gets mad at a parent, decides to run from the home to the potential neighborhood truck stop. It would not take any time for a potential perpetrator to manipulate the youth and have them out of state. Thank you for your time.
My name is Paul Reifschneider, and I am a resident of the Saddle Brook addition. My house currently faces right at 85th Street, so the proposed truck stop would be directly behind my house. From my backyard to 85th Street is approximately 1,286 feet. Reason I bring that up is because I have prior experience in managing truck drivers, maintenance logs, and dealing with overall issues with trucking. Research has shown that the risk of asthma for children living within 246 feet of even a highway increases the asthma symptoms such as wheezing and more use of asthma medication. Children are also more likely to develop asthma when exposed to traffic pollution anywhere near a school. In a national survey, more than 30% of schools were within 1,300 feet of a major highway, and 10% are within 320 feet of a major roadway. This is less than the distance to the road from my house, where all of the trucks would be stationed at. The United States EPA says that diesel particulate matter, or DPM as it's referred to, is likely to be a carcinogen. One of the ways that the Department of Transportation has tried to curb that is to put DPM regen units or filters in their trucks, but that's only on some of the newer models of trucks. So any truck that's older than, I believe it's 2006, does not have the DPM filters on them. For those trucks that do have the DPM modules on them, they are required to regen when the filters become full. Every time that those trucks regen, it takes upwards of 40 minutes to regen, and at that time, the truck begins to idle higher. That being said, having multiple trucks, hundreds of trucks, sitting behind our houses is going to create a very loud noise. Like was already discussed, we have children all over in our neighborhood that, you know, I have a four, six, and two-year-old that don't sleep well as it is, sitting there listening to trucks regening all night long. It's not going to help that cause much at all. The next concern that I have is road damage. When you have 80,000 pounds of heavy equipment constantly traveling across these roads, there will be potholes and, and other incidences that happen, traffic accidents and whatnot. Who's going to pay for repairs of these roads? Who's going to pay to take out the medians? Are we going to put a stoplight in at the intersection of 85th and Broadway where there's already multiple wrecks there causing multiple fatalities in the eight years that I've lived there? At least once a month, I can look out back and see some sort of horrific wreck. Health risks and health impacts, have there been any assessments that have been completed? Are there going to be any assessments that are completed when they tried to apply for permits? Environmental assessments, you've got diesel tanks that are on the trucks and also below ground. If there's a leak, what kind of groundwater contamination are we going to have? If air conditioning unit ruptures on one of these trucks, the freon that's released into the atmosphere is going to affect the ozone. Antifreeze dripping into the ground, that was already mentioned, is that a lot of us have well water in our property. That's going to affect all that. Are there going to be traffic assessments done due to, like I said, the wrecks and all the incidences? Gray water, with all the showers, restrooms, everything that's going to go into a truck stop, is our city wastewater department equipped to handle that kind of stuff? What kind of money is that going to take? And is that going to affect us cost, or taxpayers, to pay for all of that? That's all I got.
Hello. My name is Paul Reifschneider, and I am a resident of the Saddle Brook addition. My house currently faces right at 85th Street, so the proposed truck stop would be directly behind my house. From my backyard to 85th Street is approximately 1,286 feet. Reason I bring that up is because I have prior experience in managing truck drivers, maintenance logs, and dealing with overall issues with trucking. Research has shown that the risk of asthma for children living within 246 feet of even a highway increases the asthma symptoms such as wheezing and more use of asthma medication. Children are also more likely to develop asthma when exposed to traffic pollution anywhere near a school. In a national survey, more than 30% of schools were within 1,300 feet of a major highway, and 10% are within 320 feet of a major roadway. This is less than the distance to the road from my house, where all of the trucks would be stationed at. The United States EPA says that diesel particulate matter, or DPM as it's referred to, is likely to be a carcinogen. One of the ways that the Department of Transportation has tried to curb that is to put DPM regen units or filters in their trucks, but that's only on some of the newer models of trucks. So any truck that's older than, I believe it's 2006, does not have the DPM filters on them. For those trucks that do have the DPM modules on them, they are required to regen when the filters become full. Every time that those trucks regen, it takes upwards of 40 minutes to regen, and at that time, the truck begins to idle higher. That being said, having multiple trucks, hundreds of trucks, sitting behind our houses is going to create a very loud noise. Like was already discussed, we have children all over in our neighborhood that, you know, I have a four, six, and two-year-old that don't sleep well as it is, sitting there listening to trucks regening all night long. It's not going to help that cause much at all. The next concern that I have is road damage. When you have 80,000 pounds of heavy equipment constantly traveling across these roads, there will be potholes and, and other incidences that happen, traffic accidents and whatnot. Who's going to pay for repairs of these roads? Who's going to pay to take out the medians? Are we going to put a stoplight in at the intersection of 85th and Broadway where there's already multiple wrecks there causing multiple fatalities in the eight years that I've lived there? At least once a month, I can look out back and see some sort of horrific wreck. Health risks and health impacts, have there been any assessments that have been completed? Are there going to be any assessments that are completed when they tried to apply for permits? Environmental assessments, you've got diesel tanks that are on the trucks and also below ground. If there's a leak, what kind of groundwater contamination are we going to have? If air conditioning unit ruptures on one of these trucks, the freon that's released into the atmosphere is going to affect the ozone. Antifreeze dripping into the ground, that was already mentioned, is that a lot of us have well water in our property. That's going to affect all that. Are there going to be traffic assessments done due to, like I said, the wrecks and all the incidences? Gray water, with all the showers, restrooms, everything that's going to go into a truck There's a couple other people who may be here tonight who actually live in our subdivision who also went to Beloit High School. When, when you come from north central Kansas, or central Kansas, or, you know, even eastern Kansas, you might go down 135, Park City is a gateway city to the Wichita metropolitan area. And I think it would be not the best look for Park City to have a water tower, a truck stop located right by a residential subdivision. I think it would be a bad look for the city. I think it would be a bad first impression for anyone driving through. And really, you know, what I would urge on this is if this ever does come in front of you with a zoning case coming from the planning commission, is that, you know, I, I think that any developer there would have to go through the same process that other truck stops and similar uses, similar industrial type uses would, and not just get a certain location because that's going to work most conveniently for that, that part here, it's going to be cheapest for them to develop it. As one of your city's residents, I do expect that you'll do things to help out, grow the local economy, economic development, that's hugely important, but not at the expense of harming citizens who live and have families within your city. If this zoning case comes forward, I hope you'll keep in mind one simple but essential question. Does it make sense to locate a truck stop next to homes? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Was that everybody, Mr. Davidson?
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much for coming on and speaking tonight, and we appreciate that. We'll move on to staff reports, and we'll go to our city administrator, Sean Cox. Sean?
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, good evening. Just a couple items to update you on. First of all, census, census, and census. We're just a few weeks away from this coming to the close as Park City residents, the opportunity to be heard and/or counted. The census will stop collecting data on September 30th, and to date, Park City's self-response rate is sitting currently at 74.3%. As you're all aware, the census is vitally important into shaping the future of Park City. The data collected helps determine how billions of dollars in federal funds will be distributed for health clinics, school lunch programs, disaster recovery initiatives, and other critical programs and services over the next 10 years. It has been stated numerous times throughout the census that missing just a single home in our community means Park City could miss out on approximately $59,337 in federal funding. For those watching, folks can complete their census online by my2020census.gov or by calling the number 844-330-2020. Item number two is our street sweeper. So far, the response to the city's new street sweeper have been very positive, as staff have received several phone calls, all wanting to know when it's going to make an appearance in their neighborhood. Public Works has had it out on the streets virtually every day since they've had it. Now unfortunately, some of the areas in the community have built up over time and are bad enough to where it has taken them two and three, if not four, times to go back over to get all of it up the first time. It is a very labor-intensive, in-depth project that could take another two to three months to complete, and when it's, once it is finished, then Public Works will publish a regular schedule, whereas residents should expect to see it in their neighborhood at least once quarterly. Step one of the CARES Act process for Cedric County is ongoing, which is to say that we've logged into their system and we've registered the city. We're still awaiting some clear guidance as far as what expenditures will or will not be covered. And then finally, Park City has been selected to host, as a host city for the Kansas Certified Public Managers Course for 2021. CPM is a nationally accredited management and certification program that offers a blended learning approach of classroom hours, online learning assignments, and requires a capstone project focused on opportunities for cost savings, revenue generation, process improvement, or innovation in the workplace. Classes will meet here in the city administration's building two days a month, January through November, and for Park City hosting, the city will receive a complimentary tuition waiver that we're going to divide up among two of our employees that will be in that class. If there are any questions, that's all I have, sir.
Anybody have any questions for Sean? Not seeing any. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Go on.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to new business, item five, which is considering the reappointment of Kyle Lang to the Stormwater Management Advisory Board. Kyle's with us this evening, spoke, we got to hear from him earlier. He's served on this board since the inception of this and is a valued asset of that. Ben?
Sir, I've had the privilege of being on the board as the council liaison over this time. Kyle's been a very valuable member to the Stormwater Management Advisory Board, and so I would move to approve the reappointment of Kyle Lang to the Stormwater Management Advisory Board with a term ending in August of 2022.
Jim?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. Thank you, Kyle, for your service. That brings us to item six, which is discuss and consider adopting a charter ordinance related to the city's use of generally accepted accounting practices or principles. Doug?
Mayor and council, there is a state statute that you may all recall, because we deal with it every year. It requires cities to use generally accepted accounting principles in the preparation of financial statements and reports, but it does have a provision in it that allows cities to waive that requirement on an annual basis by the adoption of a resolution. For as long as I've been here, the city has chosen to do that on an annual basis and has adopted a resolution so that when we do prepare our financial statements and reports, we're not obligated to apply generally accepted accounting principles. This statute is non-uniform, and that allows the city the option to adopt a charter ordinance, which would make the provisions of the statute not apply, and would then allow the city on an annual basis to choose whether or not, on its own, to apply GAAP principles. It's a relatively short and, and simple charter ordinance that's in front of you. It reads that it would exempt the city from the provisions of KSA 75-1120A, which is the statute that, that I was referring to.
As everybody knows, this has been our general practice, that we do this annually.
I do have one comment. Again, I want to stress that the adoption of this charter ordinance doesn't prevent the city, in a year, from making the determination that it wishes to begin, I don't think we'd do it on a one year and then not the next, but to, to, to begin using G double A P.
Okay, Brandy?
I'll support this tonight, but I just want to go on record. I think each year when this comes to us, I always make a fuss. I would like to see us go to GAAP basis accounting, or process. And like I said, I'll support it tonight because we can change it down the future, but I would really like to see the city go towards GAAP instead of just on the, the K-MAG.
Okay, Tom?
I was trying to clarify. She's trying to see that we go toward GAAP?
Yeah.
Okay. There's a lot of liability there that you get into, I think, with not opting out of this. Isn't there, this is the part where you have to do the inventory on all the stuff, all the assets of the city?
That would be if we did not opt into this charter ordinance to get us out from that. One of the reasons why we have never done the GAAP accounting is because of the labor intensive and because of the size of our administration, it would be too tasking for them to be able to complete that, which is why most smaller municipalities don't do that. Are you done, Tom?
Yeah, I was trying to clarify that.
And that, that's true, and I, I agree with that. I mean, we, we don't have the staff to do it, and it is labor-intensive, but once we get there and we, we are on a GAAP basis, then going forward, it's, it's just keeping up with it. We've gone to where we're, we've now got a good vehicle inventory replacement, so we're, we're getting good inventory of our streets and our roads, which are things that are needed when, when we do, when we do a GAAP basis. So I feel like it just makes our financials more accurate if we are on a GAAP basis. That's just, the only reason I, I strongly encourage it is just to make our financials more, more accurate. Not that they're not accurate now, I'm, I'm not saying that at all, they're accurate, but it just makes it more where there, there's more information, there's, there's more, there's more detail there, but.
Okay. Ben?
Yeah, I'd go ahead and move to approve Charter Ordinance Number C 41-2020, exempting the city of Park City, Kansas, from the provisions of KSA 75-1120A and any amendments thereto relating to the use of generally accepted accounting principles.
Jim?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Marla, would you call the roll?
John Lanier?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Sossetta?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Mayor Ray Mann?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that ordinance, or Charter Ordinance passes nine zero. Thank you, Marla. That brings us to item seven, which is discuss and consider a proposed change of zoning district classification from SF 20, single-family residential district, to the I-1, light industrial district for the property located approximately one-quarter mile north of 53rd Street North and east of Hydralic. Doug? Or Russ, do you want that one? Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Russ Avi, interim zoning administrator for the city. I'll go ahead and tackle this one. As you mentioned, this is a newly annexed property, approximately 80 acres. When property is annexed from Cedric County into Park City, it retains its county zoning designation for a period of half a year. The applicants chose to file a zoning request for the I-1 Light Industrial District. On July 30th, the planning commission recommended approval subject to six conditions on a vote of six to zero, so that's what you have before you. The recommendation sets on a foundation of the findings of fact that are contained within your staff report. The zoning regulations spell out a number of factors which go into making a recommendation and then ultimately a decision on land use. You heard Justin Wagner, county, assistant county counselor, who sits on the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission's staff table. As he mentioned, it's a quasi-judicial decision-making process, which is why we have these 17 factors that we base our decision on. During the course of the public hearing on the 30th, we heard from one adjoining property owner. During that discussion, it seemed that staff had recommended one condition on the preservation of the existing tree rows, which was one of her concerns. The other concern dealt with light trespass in such close proximity to not only the existing industrial uses to the west of her property, but the pending industrial development to the north. Through that discussion with the planning commission, we wrote a sixth condition that dealt with, with lighting standards, setting lighting standards above and beyond what we have in the zoning regulations. That is what's before you. The staff report lists out your four options for motions. I will set for any questions, and I will point out that the one neighbor, neighboring protester is in attendance, as is the agent for the applicant, if there are any supplemental questions that you may all have.
Okay. Is there any questions from the council? Brandy?
I don't have any questions, so I'll make a motion to approve the change of zoning district classification from SF 20, single-family residential district, to the I-1 Light Industrial District for property located at north end of 53rd Street North and east of Hydralic Avenue, subject to the following conditions. One, the subject property shall be platted prior to obtaining building permits. Two, the city shall withhold the publishing of the zoning ordinance until the plat is recorded. Three, the applicant shall plat a 100-foot building setback along the northeast and south property lines, and a 200-foot building setback along Hydralic Avenue. Four, the applicant shall plat a 50-foot reserve along the northeast and south property lines to protect the existing tree row as a landscape buffer. Five, the existing tree rows along the northeast, south property lines shall be maintained in a manner sufficient to provide screening for all residentially zoned properties adjacent to the site. In the event that these tree rows no longer provide adequate screening, the subject property shall be required to install a combination of deciduous and evergreen landscaping equivalent to one tree per 20 feet. Six, all exterior lighting sources shall employ cutoff luminaries to minimize light trespass and glare, and shall be shielded in the direct light dispersment in a downward direction. The site shall share similar or consistent parking light, lighting elements, i.e. fixtures, poles, and lamps, and et cetera, and shall limit the height of light poles to 20 feet, including the base within 200 feet of a budding residential zoned property, and 28 feet, including the base on the remainder of the tract.
And Tom?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. I did not have the sign-in sheet for the agenda item. We have two people signed up to speak on that, so Penny, do you want to come up?
I'm Penny Weddle. I live at 2100 East 53rd Street North. Want to thank the mayor and the council for hearing me tonight. I want to say first that, because I've read this in the paper, I'm opposed to the casino. It will destroy many of our families. People become addicted to gambling, and it destroys their lives. And then the second item I wanted to talk about tonight was to address, I believe it's case number 202002. I would like to say I'm opposed to the zone change for this land that borders my property. My family was told when Buckley came in that the industrial zoning would not go past that wall. And some of you were here at that time, that you were on the council. This zoning is way past that wall. If this is passed, it will change Park City, I believe, to industrial Park City. And is that really what we want our city to look like? I don't. This will change the face of our city. It may not be in your backyard right now like it is in mine, but it will be in your children's and your grandchildren's because it's, it's going to spread. It's not going to be limited to this huge building. You will be taking many families' opportunity to live and raise their families here in a safe neighborhood that is close in to Wichita. You'll be taking that opportunity away. I'm concerned about, and my son and I have talked to area residents around us, and we're concerned with lighting, noise, rain runoff, semi-traffic 24 hours a day, the wear and tear on the streets from increased semi-traffic. One question I have is where is their loading and unloading zone going to be? Because I know I'm a neighbor to Buckley and Milteau, and Buckley moved their loading to the other side, so it wouldn't be right by us. Another concern, and this, after talking to the people that lived on Hydralic, they were very concerned about the eyesore of such a large building, especially for the people that living right across the street. I, I really think if this passes, which I hope it doesn't, but there needs to be landscaping on that west side with trees and I'm not sure what all else, but, so it looks nice, nice landscaping. Thank you very much.
Okay, and Evan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for the opportunity to share my concerns on the topic of this zoning change. I, I do not believe this is a time for me to mince words or be bashful at all about my feelings on this matter. I am baffled and continue to be extremely disappointed Park City is even considering this. For insight as to why, on each and every side of this property, all four sides, there is developed residential property with at least one beautiful home on each side. Two of these homes, if passed tonight, will have to deal with the massive industrial building as the main view from their very front porch. For the others, this would be an extension of their back For the others, this would be an extension of their backyard. I hope and pray that you will take time before each of your decisions tonight to think of these people and put yourself in their place to contemplate what your decision would be if that is where you or your children live. I believe if each of you were honest with yourselves, it would be a very obvious decision. You would not appreciate the people that should be representing you to allow a building of this magnitude right next to where you live. In inquiring about this topic, I've listened to many reasons for why this should be irrelevant to me, none of which I find even slightly satisfying. The buffer hedgerow, which will have to be maintained, and that will be the responsibility of the industry, that buffer is seasonal only. Between the late fall to early spring, that doesn't block your view at all. Also, what does this do to keep trash this building will produce from infiltrating the surrounding residential properties? Not to mention the noise. Moving on, there are two schools on either side of this property in question tonight. If you draw a line between each of those, this 80 acres, or the entrance to this 80 acres, will fall right in the middle of that line. That's the radius you are dealing with, and you'd be extremely carefully considering. A manufacturing warehouse is going to bring massive amounts of traffic of the biggest vehicles on the road, the inevitable result being tremendous wear on Hydralic and other nearby roads. This will also dramatically increase the danger for any young people on their way to and from school. So why this location? Without any really deep thought, I can instantly suggest two to three locations that, in my mind, would be a much better fit. How about between the new Atwoods Building and McDonald's, or south of the John Deere Building? Or even on the west side of I-135 over by Kansas Paving? It begs the question, what is Park City gaining from this? In my mind, this is only further risk to the safety of our young people, more deterioration of our roads, and lower property values. Also, where does it stop? Is the next location of the zoning change across the street from the gated community of Lakewood Hills? Which also happens to be just west of another gated community of two, excuse me, two beautiful homes? It meets the same criteria of all the excuses I've heard for changing this property zoning. To quote something my family has credited to my great-grandfather, the three most important things when considering the purchase of a home: location, location, location. I've been happy to call Park City my home for the better part of the last 20-plus years. Please do not ruin the wonderful housing areas you represent by being too sure it's decided to see all the damage your decision tonight will cause. Please vote no to changing the zoning to light industrial, and make me and others here proud to have you as a representative, as a council member for our city. Thank you very much for your time.
Would the applicant like to speak?
Phil Meyer with Baughman Company, agent for the applicant. So I'm not going to take a lot of time going over this. Many of the issues that were brought up by both Penny and Evan will be dealt with as we go through the plating process. So if this is approved, the zone change is approved tonight, we will start the plating process. We'll be dealing with traffic on Broadway during that process. We'll be dealing with drainage and concerns that go on there. You have an ordinance for the noise concerns they have. So with that, I think a lot of the issues they're bringing up with will meet the city's requirements, and we'll address those as we go through the plating process. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody have any questions? Russ, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nothing further.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lanier?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Saucetta?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that motion passes seven one. Thank you. That will bring us to our closing comments, and I'll start with Jim.
Just want to thank everybody for showing up tonight and expressing their concerns. It's always good to hear the community's inputs, so I have no other further comments.
Brandy?
I have no comments.
George?
I don't have anything.
Tom?
I don't have anything.
Melvin?
I'm good.
Ben?
I do want to say thank you to each person that did come out, echo what Jim said there. Thank you for taking time to come out and address us tonight there. You can't always guarantee agreement, but we do appreciate hearing what each person has to say, and value that very much, so thank you.
George?
Yeah, I'd like to give a shout out to my grandson, Micah. His birthday was today. Happy birthday, Micah. Also, for those folks who are still in need of school supplies, a lot of our resident kids, I want to give some information out as a resource. There's a back-to-school backpack giveaway with school supplies next Monday, August 31st, from 12 to 1:00 at Evergreen Resource Center, 2700 North Woodlawn. So I will leave the information with the folks here, the employees, to get that information. Phone number's 303-8042. Just keep trust and faith in the Lord. Thank you.
Okay, John?
I have nothing. I would make a motion to adjourn.
And Ben?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. Thank you.